There's not much gonna happen.
You got featured in the Chamber Newsletter, did you see that?
No, I did not.
They put that in the, uh, here in the newsletter.
Oh, God.
This one's Chamber Newsletter.
All right.
Are you hearing names about their new chief?
We have interviews there.
Oh, do we?
No, I, I mean, I'm on the committee, so I'll find out.
Sean Valley told me that they have, they've submitted the five names to see, but I hadn't heard anything about them.
Yes, you don't. I guess, what if I wait for that thing? Ready? Okay. Yes, I'd like to call the St. Charles County Council meeting of January 27th, year 2020, to order here. We'll start off with the invocation that will be led by Pastor McNeese from the Redemption Assembly of God, of Church of Wentzville, and then it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Nancy Snyder.
I didn't study.
I'd invite you all to bow your heads with me. Our Heavenly Father, tonight I ask you to give help to these proceedings. What greater business is there than to run the very difficult and complicated business of governing this great county of St. Charles? You've prepared the people, the men and the women here, to do business. You've given them an education, experience, but there are still things that we cannot possibly foresee. Tonight, help these individuals separate fact from fiction and see through what needs to be done for this county. Your Bible, your word says, "If any man lack wisdom, let him ask of God," and so I'm asking that of you tonight. Help us to set aside ideologies. Lord, help us tonight to love one another. Help us in this room to work together to the best of our ability for the glory and the wonder of this great county. Let it progress, let it prosper as it has, and may others around the state of Missouri and this nation look upon this great county and see the wonderful work done here. Help these people govern the county tonight, we pray. May every decision be the right decision for the betterment of the people and the betterment of this county. And I ask this in the wonderful name of Jesus, amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brice.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here. Next order of business is public comments. A reminder, those that speak, to fill out a card. Just a reminder that the time limit is three minutes, and we will accept three pro and three con on each issue. Claire, you got some names?
Charles Williamson.
Okay, I'll try and keep time on myself. Okay, guys, good evening, council. I come for you tonight to talk about the flooding that's been happening over the years. Most of you have been around for a long time. Steve and everybody else, we know what county takes here. But what's going on right now, Governor Parsons got a committee, and they're supposed to make a final report in May. But this committee is comprised of different groups around the state, and it's also, you know, they're looking at the Missouri River also and all the volume of floods they've had there. But what's going on here, and I've lived out there 50 years. My mom was Portage and her grandpa and all that. That town's been there over 200 years. They've had more floods in the last 20 than they had the previous 200. These aren't made by nature. What a group that's up there on this committee is Yumembra. They represent a lot of the flood districts that are, or levee districts, I'm sorry, that are up in northern Missouri and Illinois, a couple in Iowa. And the Corps of Engineers has identified these districts as being four to five feet over the top of where the levees are supposed to be. Hydrologists for the Corps have identified this is putting three to five feet of water, every water event, not flood, every water event, on Missouri. And guess what? We're on the crosshairs in St. Charles County. We have no levees across the whole northern side of St. Charles that are along that river. We're bare bones to it. Everybody out there has been taking abuse, and I'd like to see this council kind of help and go after these committees, or at least touch base with the governor and said, hey, we'd like a little representation here, because they're trying to make an end run, remember Yumembra is, with the Congress to get Plan H is their original plan. We've been fighting that for a long time, but to get that plan set in stone so that their levees, well, they know they're over the limit. They put them over the limit on purpose, but they said, well, we'd like to get these established so we can keep them. And this is, guys, this is gonna be genocide for everybody out there in floodplain. School district, everybody else. Everything's based off the 93 flood, we know was our big one. But this is a game changer, because now the demographics of the Mississippi River and water coming down here is way beyond what they, what they had in 93. They didn't have the levees they have now. There's hundreds of thousands of acres up there, farm ground, which is no different than ours out here, that's no more important than ours, and they think it is. And we're taking the abuse. And everybody out there, you guys, everybody here knows that. We've been here a long time dealing with this, but we live out there, that's where it is. But we accept that, but when the man-made flood's coming at us like this consistently every other year, winter floods are unbelievable. You just, you never would have them. I mean, I'm an old duck hunter out there, and that cold water is just not any fun anymore. But it just makes it miserable for everybody, but they shouldn't be happening in the middle of winter. The river just doesn't, doesn't work that way. And, you know, I'd like the council maybe to go after and address these folks that are up there on council and, you know, maybe get something done with them. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm over the limit, but I appreciate you guys' indulgence on this, and the citizens out there would really like it, and I'm gonna see a lot of them this weekend, so I know there're gonna be some questions about it. Yeah, Joe?
Yes. Years back, myself and Councilman Dougherty, which represented the St. Charles Bottoms and I represent-
Lives in Portage, yep.
Right. We went to a lot of the neighbors in the Mississippi meetings. We met with Lincoln County Councilman. We met, I think we actually went to one Yumembra meeting too. And the problem is, as you know as well as I do, there's those, those folks that are members of that are typically large-scale farmers, bankers, big money, where this side of the river tends to be smaller parcels.
Oh, you're right.
Okay? So any information you've got, maybe this, this has been a few years down past, but any information you have about this, would you send this to me? I'd like to take a look at it again, and maybe we can get involved up a little bit.
Have no problem. It's actually public record there. Governor Parsons is at least looking at this. Maybe, I think more of it was because of the Missouri River flooding through central Missouri, and it's not so much of what was going on in the Mississippi. But, yeah, I'm more than happy to send that to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Arne Deenoff.
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, public advocate and county resident. Are you done?
When you're done.
Okay. That was very rude. So anyways, Mr. Chairman, my name is Arne C. A.C. Deenoff, public advocate and resident. And a couple of things that I'd like to talk about. First of all, are the consulting services for Smart Field. We just heard about flooding. Smart Field floods every year. Let me repeat myself. Smart Field floods every year. Costs taxpayers or our county millions upon millions of dollars to rehab this airport because of flooding. We either need to get it out of the floodplain or scrap the project. Now, you want to spend $32,000 for another consultant, and it's taxpayer, taxpayer dollars going down the tubes. It's wasteful spending. We spent millions upon millions of this redoing this airport from the floodwaters. Bill 4811, you want to rename Smart Field to the regional, which what I call for the rich and wealthy of St. Charles County to fly their toy airplanes or their little hobbies. And so I think it's ridiculous that you want to rename this airport, and it's just a waste of taxpayer money overall. Bill number 4812, again, you want to have an emergency airport aid agreement to repair runway lighting system. It's gonna be ruined by the floodwaters in the spring of 2020 to the tune of $43,000. And I think we need to look at other options rather than wasting our local, county, and federal funds. Now, before this meeting, I made a request to the county executive's office for a public records request. On your agenda is the destruction of records of the county executive. I sent it to Ms. Lycom and Ms. Gibbs and Mr. Elmond to my right. I'd like to view the 2012, 2013 payroll records, budget requests, credit card authorizations, purchase orders, check requests, and travel authorization before they get destroyed. I think there's some questions here that need to be taken care of, and may be referred to both the county auditor and the state auditor's office for some examination and investigation. Now, it's in the past, and again tonight, I will call for either the resignation or the retirement of Police Chief David Todd. Enough bad leadership in our county. He is a bad leader, in my opinion. The rules, the standard operating procedures of the county police have been manipulated, violated. There's been racketeering, there's been political endorsements or advancement without following the three-year rules of being in one rank before being considered for another. There's dishonesty, sexual harassment of women in the police department, and there's some bad leaders that are allowed to remain in the administration. I'm asking that we do a nationwide search for a police chief. We did it in O'Fallon, and we found Chief Tim Clovier, outstanding and excellent. And I ask that this council do a nationwide search to once and for all find a good leader that has 15 years of experience and a master's degree in law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deenoff. Anyone else, Claire?
No more speaker cards.
Next up is the consent agenda, or is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would like to remove for discussion the, the three contracts for professional services, just for the Highway Department, just for brief discussion, please.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is removed from the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Takowski, can I ask you a question, please? You know, I read through these a little bit, and I just, my question would be, like, for instance, and I've read through what Chris Bostic said, how you select folks is mostly RFQs. So, I mean, you try to choose, choose the best person. And I don't know how you balance it, for instance, if the best guy costs $200,000 and a guy that's not so good's $100,000, do you take the $100,000, do you take the $200,000? I don't quite understand that. And then, like, for instance, $170,000 for highway and overlay and sidewalk improvements. I mean, if you're laying over asphalt, or I assume, and you have to put new sidewalks in, does it really cost that much? And then the last question I have, a few times I've been down at MoDOT's office at K&amp;N, and I see, looks like they've got engineering staff and maybe some draftsman in there. This is $650,000, these three contracts. It would, would be prudent for us to think about, oh, maybe you have additional, for $650,000, you could pick up a couple civil engineers and a few draftsmen, I would think. So, I mean, that's the only questions I have, sir. I'm not, I'm not questioning your judgment or anything, I'm just wanting to know how the system works.
I can address the first one?
Yes, sir.
We are not allowed by state statute to talk about price until after we have selected a firm. We used to do that, and we got our hands slapped a little bit, and the statutes are very clear now that you must select a consultant based on their qualifications, on their manpower, on their ability to handle the workload. Once that consultant is selected, then you sit down and you start talking price. And that's a negotiated price. They submit hours and fees associated with that. We look at and say, well, we think you could probably save some time here, cut the fees back a little bit. And normally, we come to a consensus. If we cannot, then we have to go back to the second most qualified consultant and start all over again discussing fees at that point with them. So, again, there's no guarantee even that it would be less than what we ended up with the first one, although, you know, that would be the goal, if we felt like the other one was too high. So, that's the process that we must follow by state statute.
So, when you, when you, what is the threshold? When you look at a project, you say, well, maybe we need to talk to the second bit or two? What's, what's the process?
You can't do that. You have, yeah. You want, once you pick your favorite, not favorite consultant, but most qualified consultants, highest-scoring consultant, then you talk money with them, and you cannot talk money with anybody else until you've cut off negotiations with that first firm.
But just thinking of how the marketplace works, once that company knows that they are the selected, the chosen one, what's to keep them from overcharging you?
Well, I mean, we do, we do have the ability to scrutinize, you know, their charges. Unfortunately, this is just how the statutes is written. They're called professional services, and we don't have a lot of a hammer here that we can use. I mean, and these, these firms negotiate in good faith most of the time. I mean, once, once they get a project with us, they'll want to have another one in the future. So, the last thing they want to do is give us the impression that they're overcharging us.
Okay.
And so it works out fairly well. I mean, it is a lot of money, there's no doubt about that. And your, your last question was, should we be doing this in-house? I don't know that we have enough projects to hire the engineers, pay for the hardware and software that we would need, and keep all of that functioning 365 days a year. We would have downtime, we would probably be forced to lay off people. The consultants, of course, they get jobs from all the agencies around, private sector. They can always keep their people busy. I don't believe that we, that we could do that, because it takes a lot of hours to do these projects. I mean, a lot of hours.
Okay.
So, you have to have staff, you have to have hardware, a big, big capital investment. And then what happens if we don't get projects for a while? We've got these people sitting there, we've got this hardware sitting there, and it's not being utilized.
Okay. You've done a great job on the roads, and I'm, and I'm, what I'm hearing from you is, this is a system, we gotta do nothing any better.
This is a system we're forced to deal with.
But when we look at the county budget and the shape that it's in, if you see anything that's better, don't hesitate to let us know.
And I thought you had one more question. Did I answer all three?
That's pretty much it, but even like an overlay project, do you really have to do that much engineering?
Well, with, with that project, it's a little more complicated. The overlay is simple, there's no doubt about that. Unfortunately, on the, well, I'll call the right-hand side of the road, we're going to be putting in a sidewalk, and the way those yards are graded, back rear yards, we're probably looking at substantial retaining walls that need to go in. And there's a lot of engineering that's involved with retaining walls and changing all the storm sewer structures out in order to accommodate that. So, even though it looks like a simple project, it's actually a bit more complicated.
Is there some type of federal or state mandate to put more sidewalks in? Because I'm seeing ones like, for instance, on the new I-70 Main Street, Highway K project in O'Fallon. They've got sidewalks there big enough, you could drive a small car down, okay? Is there some type of new mandate? Because they put all these sidewalks in in these streets, and you seldom see people using them.
It's, there's not a government mandate, there's a, I think, what you would call a public mandate. I mean, people expect us to be doing that now. When I first started in this business, we couldn't even use county road board money to build sidewalks. That was, we could only build it on the road. But as things have progressed over time, and people want to get out and walk and want to get out and ride bikes, they're pretty much forcing us to start including these. And in fact, a lot of the federal money now is tied to whether or not we include sidewalks into our projects. If we did not include the sidewalk on Route N, we would not have got any federal money to do that job.
The Westero, O'Fallon, where all the cement trucks drive, when they widen that up, they, they got the money by putting a bicycle lane in. I drive that all the time, never saw a bicycle on it, but sure is nice for the cars with the cement trucks. But hey, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Sure thing.
That's, I'd like to put that back on the consent agenda.
Motion to put this back on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up is bills for final passage, starting with bill number 4809.
Bill number 4809, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute a professional services agreement between St. Louis County, St. Charles County, Jefferson County, the Housing Authority of St. Louis County, the City of O'Fallon, and the City of Florissant, and Mosaic Community Planning LLC for analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute a professional services agreement between St. Louis County, St. Charles County, Jefferson County, the Housing Authority of St. Louis County, the City of O'Fallon, and the City of Florissant, and Mosaic Community Planning LLC for analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brice.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Okay. Bill number 4809 passes. Next up for final passage is bill number 4810.
Bill number 4810, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the congestion mitigation and air quality, CMAQ, agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to grant the use of funds to improve the intersection at Central School Road and St. Peters Hall Road, federal project CMAQ 7302683, for the reimbursement of up to 80% of the eligible costs, not to exceed a maximum of $1 million.
Any questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the congestion mitigation and air quality agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to grant the use of funds to improve the intersection at Central School Road and St. Peters Hall Road, federal project CMAQ 7302683, for the reimbursement of up to 80% of the eligible costs, not to exceed a maximum of $1 million. Councilmember Brice.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4810 passes. Next up for final passage is bill number 4811.
Bill number 4811, an ordinance to rename the St. Charles County Airport, the St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would like to point out, you know, when somebody's gonna fall themselves a public advocate, they should speak the truth, because I know the county airport doesn't flood every year, and it hasn't. So, I, I have a real problem. If you're gonna get up and be a public advocate, you ought to speak the truth. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cronin?
I'd like to echo that. I was a longtime tenant of that airport, and not only is it not flood every year, but also not everybody there is a wealthy person, okay? You can buy a, most of the planes there cost less than an average pickup truck, and the hangars are awfully reasonable. They're a little over $200 a month for somebody for a hangar. So, when you can, you know, anybody that's got a bass boat, or bowls, or a lot, any other hobby, you can spend just about the same amount of money on some of those hobbies as you do flying. Also, the current director's worked really hard through the flood to get that airport back in shape, and he's basically, this name change is designed to try to show this more regional effort that maybe will get a little extra business into it. Additionally, a lot of these contracts, like, the reason I didn't question the contract on the consent agenda is most of those are paid by substantial amount by MoDOT from fuel taxes. Those people that are flying those airplanes at Smart Field are paying. So, it's a little, if you get some time to go down to the airport, it's a hidden gem for the county, and the current airport director's really worked his butt off to make it, make it nice even after that flood.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
An ordinance to rename the St. Charles County Airport, the St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field. Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brice.
Yes.
Bill number 4811 passes. Next bill for final passage, bill number 4812.
Bill number 4812, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's Emergency Airport Aid Agreement, Project AIR 196-111A-1, to repair runway lighting system and replace pappies, and to accept a grant in the amount of $43,380, which represents 100% of funding available for qualifying expenses.
Questions, comments on bill number 4812? Seeing none, please call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission's Emergency Airport Aid Agreement, Project AIR 196-111A-1, to repair runway lighting system and replace pappies, and to accept a grant in the amount of $43,380, which represents 100% of funding available for qualifying expenses. Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brice.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Bill number 4812 passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I recall, when we moved on the consent agenda, the three professional service agreements were pulled off the consent agenda. And when the discussion on those three, the consent agenda was adopted, when those discussion ended on those three professional service agreements, we went on to the bills for final passage. We never acted on those.
They did take a vote. I was under the impression they did take a vote.
Yeah, we did.
He asked for a motion to return that to the consent agenda, and it was passed.
Councilmember Cronin and then-
Yeah. We can pass.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the professional services item that was removed from the consent agenda by Mr. Cronin.
Three items.
All three.
All three.
Okay. Have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next up is bills for introduction. First of all, we have bill number 4813.
Bill number 4813, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving execution of first supplemental cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, known as the Commission, to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County in the cost of the Commission's public improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County line to the Missouri River, job number WMSCF18Q.
Any questions or discussion on bill number 4813? Mr. Cronin?
I complained about this and voted against it last year. And afterwards, I got a pretty good chew-in from our county transportation lobbyists at the time, because it was part of a negotiated agreement with, with MoDOT. The problem I had with it back then is we're actually paying county taxpayers money to pick up trash and mow part of a federal interstate highway that's supposed to be maintained by MoDOT. And we don't pay to have Highway 79 mowed or picked up. We don't pay for Highway 61 or 64. I don't know why this one's different. So, if you want me to vote for this next time, I need to find out if this was part of a negotiated agreement like the last one was, because I, I did eventually agree with the transportation lobbyists. I even sent out note, note, or letters to the MoDOT folks, so I didn't get them riled up about it, okay? Because, because there was a lot of transportation needs in my district. That being said, I would like to know a little bit more why we have to spend our money on their road, okay?
I understand.
Okay.
Any other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I would like to know that too, and I, and I've asked our legislative delegation several times why it is that we spend, over the last eight years, $90 million on their system. And that's, that's what we have spent, and you all are very much aware of that. As I've said before, I don't regret any, a dime that we've spent, but how long can we continue to do it? It's the same way with, I mean, they've cut it, they've cut back on the number of times that they, they do the grass, just as they, you know, so, John, I think they were supposed to cut it six times. As it, as it turned out, the weather was too wet, they only cut it five, and we got, we got a refund for, for whatever it is. I will only say that I remember on one occasion driving back from Columbia or somewhere, and it, I did, just happened to notice it. The grass was very high, all the way down, until you got to St. Charles County and had just cut it, and it really looked a whole lot better than, than the rest of I-70. So, yeah, I wished, I wished MoDOT would take care of it, and then we wouldn't have to.
Yes.
Sure.
Can I add also that in addition to cutting the grass, it's the litter pickup? And so I, when the question was, why I-70, not 79, not 61? I-70 is our most heavily traveled corridor, and sometimes what we think is litter is not just plastic bottles, it's pieces of furniture, it's couches, it's tires. And having that picked up four times a season, unless someone complains, is, is really not acceptable on such a major corridor. acceptable on such a major corridor. You know, we wish that MoDOT had the manpower and the staff and would do it, but paying for two additional litter pickups is, is pretty critical on such a heavily-traveled corridor in our county.
Could, could we not just put a sign up and say the additional rubble along the highway is courtesy of the state legislature not passing and increasing the fuel tax?
We could use, we could use a sign similar to that, similar wording throughout the county on many, many roads. This is just one more example of local government being asked to pick up some of the duties that the state normally does. And so, picking up litter, cutting the grass, you know, we do a lot of work on the rural routes to make them safer. Unfortunately, the state legislator gets their act together and actually fund transportation the way they need to. You know, as the county executive said, how much longer can we afford to do so? We are, we do supplement their system quite a bit.
Any other discussion on this bill?
I would tell Mr. Cronin that both the Greater St. Charles Chamber and the O'Fallon Chamber have a great billboard program where you can actually advertise for 100 bucks on the billboards along 70. So, if you decide-
I'll spend that hundred.
I started to say, if you decide that you want to do that, I'm a chamber member, we can make that work.
And the governors come to town for Lincoln Days, might be an appropriate time.
You know, just throwing that idea out there.
The governor supports that fuel tax to go into voters.
Since we're on a subject that, that swamped down in the fines, it's on Highway 94, it's been there for years. I had Donna, we made a sign, we actually made a sign and said, "This is a MoDOT problem. Call your state senator." I put their phone numbers on there, the state, the reps, because everyone was calling me complaining about it. That sign is still on that corner, everyone reads it.
Problem still there?
It's been there about six months.
Problem still there?
Well, they got the engineering, and they're gonna put in out the bid to fix it. So, I may put some pressure on them, I don't know, but maybe the sign thing is such a bad idea.
Just throwing it out there.
Yes.
I don't think it was the sign that put the pressure on them, I think there's a councilman that put a lot of pressure on them, on that particular water hole.
All right. Any other discussion on bill number 4813? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to bill number 4814 for introduction.
Bill number 4814, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number Three, Airport Improvement Program Grant, Project 16-111A-1, to extend the project time period to allow for completion of the work for design and construction of apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport.
Any discussion on bill number 4814? Okay, seeing none, that ends the bills for introduction. Are there any table bills to be removed from the table? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to announcements and miscellaneous. Does anyone have some? Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna bring this up now, and I'd like the council and maybe yourself to consider doing a work session about this. A week ago Monday, actually, a week ago today, Post-Dispatch headline was "Prisons Shrink Under Parson." And essentially, the gist of the article is, there's 7,000 extra capacity at the state prisons due to stuff, some of the probation reforms, some of the other things were done. And I think that ties in nicely to what, we just got this final report recommendation where the fix to our jail because we're running out of room is $93 million, which is money